I will now call this meeting to order. We have a quorum. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Closed session topics are 2.1 Public Employee Assignment Reassignment Appointment, 2.2 Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release Complaints, 2.3 Conference with Labor Negotiator, 2.4 Conference with Legal Counsel, 2.5 Conference with Real Property Negotiators, 2.6 Anticipated Litigation, and 2.7 Public Employee Evaluation. Public comment on closed session topics. General public comment on any closed session item will be heard at this time. Pursuant to board policy, the board will limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Seeing no public comment, the board will now adjourn to closed session. I will convene regular session. Alondra Moran will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of the meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Alondra Moran servirá como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español. El ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones. Gracias.
This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public wanting to provide public comment on the items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out the public comment form, the green form located on the table at the northeast entrance of this meeting room. Please hand the completed form to Senior Executive Assistant Monica Andrew before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Andrews is sitting at the table in the back of this meeting room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. Board Member Megan K. Spears Saleno will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. All right. I'd like to report action taken in closed session. In closed session on a motion by Board Member Odo and a second by Board Member Viegas. The board agreed unanimously by, no, the board agreed by a vote of five with two absent to appoint Sonia Joyner to the position of Principal of Ridgeview Middle School. I see her back there. There she is. Dr. Sonia Joyner has served as the principal of Cottonwood Creek for the last six years. Prior to her employment with the district, Dr. Joyner served as the executive director of Pathways to College Charter School for four years. Prior to this, she worked in Texas as a principal for seven years, an assistant principal for five years, and taught middle school for five years. She also taught elementary and middle school students in Los Angeles, California for nine years. Dr. Joyner earned a Bachelor of Arts in Psychology from the University of California, Los Angeles, a master's degree in education administration from National University, and a doctorate in educational leadership from Capella University. She holds a multiple subject teaching credential and an administrative services credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Dr. Sonia Joyner. All right, revisions to enclosure items. There are revised item enclosures number 5.12, 5.13, and 5.14. May I have a motion to adopt the board meeting agenda?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay. On a motion by Board Member K. Spears Saleno and a second by Board Member Belt, I'll call for a vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
General public comment on any school-related topic may be heard at this time. The board asks that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act, California's open public meeting law, the board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments, and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understanding of the board's responsibility. Pursuant to board policy, the board will limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Is there any public comment? Okay, seen none. I will move to consent. Would any board member like to pull an item from consent? Seen none. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll move. I'll second.
All right. On a motion by Board Member Gamoyen and a second by Board Member K. Spears Saleno.
Motion passes unanimously 7-0.
Board member reports. I'll start the other way. Board Member Viegas.
No report tonight.
Board Member Odo.
No report.
Board Member Gamoyen.
I just want to welcome Monica Andrews, our new board manager. Oh, never mind.
Just like to welcome her tonight.
Thank you for being at the meeting tonight. We have not interviewed yet. Sorry about that. Okay, no report.
Board Member K. Spears Saleno.
No report.
Board Member Belt.
Just one thing. This morning was a red-letter day for Ivanhoe, the community of Ivanhoe, and several of our staff were there, along with Rick Hamilton was able to make some comments as they return dirt. We had a groundbreaking ceremony for a very, very new but long-awaited sidewalk. I know it doesn't sound like a big deal, but it is for the community of Ivanhoe. It will actually be a sidewalk that goes from that five-way stop that you're familiar with all the way to Ivanhoe Elementary School. And so several of our staff, including Mrs. Aguilera, was there representing the school and the community was well represented as this $2.5 million project that's being paid for by Tulare County and grant funds, and will keep all of our kids a lot safer.
Board Member Naylor, or Board Clerk Naylor.
No report.
One thing I do want to mention is, well, first of all, thank you to all of you that have to be here on your summer break, but I do know that there's lots of work that goes on during the summer. And last night, or last week, we said it, thank you to all of our maintenance teams and all of that that are in the thick of their 40 days of getting all of our schools taken care of and ready for another school year. I do want to mention, so tonight on consent, we approved some contracts related to like student intervention and support for the upcoming school year. And while I definitely want to continue to have these programs in place, and they're very needed and they do a lot for our students, I do think that we have to start to acknowledge kind of like the reality that we're going into budget kind of crunch times and where things are going to get a little bit tighter. And so as we go forward, you know, I'm just kind of starting to look at how do we look at what are the clarity of our outcomes? What are the effectiveness of our programs? And how do we start to evaluate based on some metrics going forward? Because I think all programs, you know, in a sense are good for kids, and all programs have very worthwhile goals and what they're trying to accomplish for kids. But we're going to get to a point where we have to look at like kind of cost benefit and what is servicing the most kids and kind of like getting the most for our students. And so I just, you know, I know these are already in place for next year, and we definitely wanted, you know, I definitely wanted to approve that and have these things in place for our students. I do just want to kind of put that out there and at, you know, study sessions and just as staff bring programs forward, how do we look at what is the goal of this program? And then how are we going to evaluate its effectiveness so that we know what we're doing, what's best for kids? And with that, superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you. A couple of things. One, again, just our summer programs are going well, very well attended by our students. I'll have the opportunity to visit some of our summer sites on Friday, so I'm excited about that. Learning continues for our staff as well. And so just had an opportunity to be with part of our team as they continue to engage in leadership development and learning that's going to impact their leadership effectiveness and that of those they work with. And so spent a week with some of our principals and district team, and we're in very good hands, very, I just came away so impressed. And our folks were, we're in a training with individuals from all across the country. And I can tell you that we should be very proud of the people we have, and I appreciate this board's investment in the leadership of our district, our site leaders and our district leadership as well. I want to echo Trustee Belt's comments. I know that that improvement in Ivanhoe has been a long time coming, and, you know, the county commission and others really working to make sure that our students have safe ways to get to school and just investments in that community as well. And so thank you for representing us and our, and our team as well there today. And also want to comment on President Gaby's comments. Appreciate that. It is very important that while we look at the opportunities we have for our students and their supports, we also have to acknowledge the reality of our economic times, right? And irregardless of that, doing what's right, looking at program effectiveness, deciding what are the appropriate metrics to determine if something is effective, because there are lots of different ways that that can be viewed, because this board has to make decisions when it comes to taxpayer dollars and other things, that what we're putting money into is the most effective that we can. And so we've begun with our quarterly reports and continue to do so as we go into this next year, really beginning to look at what is that return on investment, knowing that lives are impacted by that. And so it's very important that where we choose to use and invest, we do so wisely and with clear indicators for success. And so I appreciate those comments. I do feel that we'll be able to continue to share that and express that with the board. So I appreciate that. And otherwise, we hope everyone has a safe summer, whether you have traveled or will or are engaged in one of our summer programs. We look forward to these next few weeks and everybody taking a little bit of time to relax. Thank you.
All right. General agenda. Visel Unified School District's local control indicators and performance level, levels. Administrator of Family and Community Services, Jim Sullivan.
Good evening, Board President Gaby, Mr. Schrum. My name's Jim Sullivan. I'm the, man, I'm blowing it tonight. I'm the Administrator of Family and Community Services. Tonight I'll be sharing you information concerning the local measures of the state of California uses to evaluate our school district. We engaged our community partners in developing the local indicators through surveys, and again, it was focusing on student achievement. This is our dashboard that the state has given us, along with the seven metrics for the students' performances. There are five other metrics the state uses to evaluate the effectiveness of our programs. But unlike the first five, these are self-assessed and either listed as standards met or not met. To achieve standards met, we must show we are working to address each area and not whether each area is fully completed. For basic services, this addresses teachers' misassignments, students' access to adopted materials, and the facilities report is based on each site's fit report. So alls we have to do is mark met, because we reviewed the data and we were looking at it to develop new plans. For implementation of the state's standards is another self-reporting tool that we have to use. Support in professional development to address state standards and policies to improve instruction is the next area. They range from one being exploring to five full implementation sustainability. So for professional learning, we have identified ourselves as full implementation in ELA and math, and then the other subject areas, you can see at different stages we're at. In implementation of policies for, or in instructional materials, I'm sorry, we're in full implementation. For policies such as helping create opportunities for teachers to learn from each other and other professional learning opportunities, we range from full implementation to beginning implementation. One of the strategies that will increase this is our new schedule for elementary, where the teachers will have to look and observe other teachers. For academic standards and the other content areas, you can see we range from full to initial. And again, we met this, we met this standard. For parent engagement, you'll notice many of the items in this section is addressed in our strategic plan and focus areas, three regarding community supports. LAAs must identify the numbers by which we indicate our current stages of implementation for building relationships, building partnerships, and seeking input for decision-making. For providing learning opportunities for building relationships with parents and families, our principals and APs support our average, on average, initial implementation. For professional learning, for helping staff understand how to build relationships with our community, all for our initial implementation. And then seeking input for decision-making, all for initial implementation. At the district office level, we provide agendas and PowerPoints to support principals for school site councils. As you know, Mr. Schrum has worked on opportunities for input regarding district's plan. One of our next steps will be is to focus on underrepresented groups for their inputs. So again, we met that. And school climate survey, this one is just identifying that we have given the school climate survey for students and staff, and later on in this, in this year, they will present the results from those surveys. Access to broad courses of study. The last section for this dashboard is access to broad courses of study. This is helping support students having access to A through G, CTE, and COS courses. As you might remember from other board presentations, we reviewed our student schedules. Students with disabilities, students failing a class, and English learners struggle having access to these courses. Here are some of the barriers that we identified for students having access to those courses. ELD classes, support classes. To help students access for the broad courses of study, some of the activities we're implementing are changing sped services in middle schools in ninth grade and providing professional learning development and master, developing their master schedules. Again, we've met that criteria. And that is it. Do you have any questions for?
Is there any public comment?
I have a question. One of the slides mentioned number of teachers misassigned. Can you define what that means exactly?
Miss, I'll let Mr. Dillon answer that question.
One of the slides that mentioned total number of teachers misassigned, and that's why I was just curious as to what that means. Is that a, like teachers that aren't emergency credential or what is that definition?
Yeah. It means that there's teachers who are teaching adara outside of their authorized, their primary authorized subject area. And so there are times where we have unique coursework where we have teachers who have the authorization through CTC to do so, but we provide the opportunity for them to do that. A lot of times, that's what I'm bringing to you at times at the end of the board meetings.
Thank you.
And that was information only.
Okay. Any other board comment?
I have a quick question. So do we just have to evaluate our status on that indicator? Or is there any requirement that we move to the next level the next year? So like if you said initial implementation, like do we have to be at full next year or just we have to reevaluate each year?
We just reevaluate each year.
Yes. All right. That was information only, but don't go far because I will now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on this item. Presenter, Administrator of Family and Community Services, Jim Sullivan.
Good evening. I'm here just to ask for approval of our LCAP. And if you approve that, we would be, that would be very helpful.
If, is there any public comment? Any board member comments? Then I will now close the public hearing and reconvene the regular session. May I have a motion to approve the 2425 LCAP?
I'll motion.
Second.
So nice of you. All right. Call for a vote.
Motion passes unanimously 7-0.
Thank you very much.
And sorry, Ms. Andrews. That was on a motion by Board Member K. Spears Saleno and a second by Gamoyen. Unanimous 7-0. Okay. Public hearing for the 2024-25 budget adoption. I'll now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on this item. Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez.
Good evening, President Gaby, members of the board, and Superintendent Schrum. So I'm here for the same thing. This is our second reading and adoption of the budget. We do have the slideshow ready to go, but if there, there are no changes to our budget from our last presentation last week, we do know that the legislature has sent a budget onto the governor for his approval. He's not signed that yet, so we don't have any action, official action to share yet from the state. But with that, I open it up to questions or I can jump to the presentation and slideshow.
Is there any public comment? Any board member comments or need to see any slides?
Well, it appears that the governor has backed up on some of what he was talking about, so I can't believe I'm going to say this, but thank you to the CTA actually put out some information that made his reconsideration. So that was a good thing that happened for us.
All right. Then I will close the public hearing and reconvene regular session, and may I have a motion to approve and adopt the 2425 USD budget?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Odo and a second by Board Member K. Spears Saleno.
Motion passes unanimously 7-0.
And LCAP and a budget, life's going well. All right. Resolution to approve the expenditure of Education Protection Account Funds in accordance with the budget for fiscal year 2024-25. Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez.
So this is an annual item that we bring to the board on how we are spending our education protection account funds. The EPA funds are part of our local control funding formula, so it's a portion of the LCFF. It's not a separate portion of funding, but it does require that these funds not be spent on administrator salaries. And so each year we share with the board that we intend to spend these funds on teacher salaries and benefits, and so we're requesting your approval of this resolution.
Is there any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
On a motion by Board Clerk Naylor and a second by Board Member Odo, call for a vote.
Motion passes unanimously 7-0.
All right. Public hearing and resolution conveying easement to the city of Viselia. I will now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on this item. Chief Operations Officer Eric Keer.
Good evening, President Gaby, Superintendent Schrum, members of the board. This is the, the measure that's come before you a month or so ago to the intent to convey this piece of property. This is the Caldwell and Lover's Lane small strip of property to allow the city to widen Caldwell Avenue. And so we're just asking approval to this resolution so that the city can start work.
Is there any public comment? Any board member comments? All right. I will close the public hearing and reconvene the regular session. May I have a motion to approve and adopt the resolution to the city of Viselia?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. On a motion by Board Member Viegas and a second by K. Spears Saleno.
Motion passes unanimously 7-0.
Thank you.
All right. Employment Agreement Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. This item is the board's discussion and possible approval of an employment agreement with Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Andrew D. Demeo. The district's legal counsel, Megan Macy, will present the item.
Good evening, board. It's nice to be here with you. Unfortunately, I can't be quite as quick as the last two, because the Brown Act does require a full report out on these employment agreements, which I'm going to read out for each of these action items. And then the following item is going to be approval of salary schedules that relate to these items and other management, other management items. One thing I do want to point out is the salary schedules are the same as last year. So when I'm reading this, hopefully that'll make sense. So the, for Mr. Demeo, the key material terms of employment agreement are as follows. The term is for four years from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2028. For the 2425 school year, the assistant superintendent shall be placed on step three of the assistant superintendent's salary schedule with a base salary of $245,970. Per the terms of his existing contract, this salary reflects a merit increase for the assistant superintendent for a satisfactory evaluation. In addition to the assistant superintendent's base salary, the assistant superintendent shall be entitled to $400 per year if the assistant superintendent possesses a master's degree or $650 per year if the assistant superintendent possesses a doctoral degree. The assistant superintendent shall participate in the district's total compensation program on the same terms and conditions as all other district certificated managers. Since the assistant superintendent participates in the total compensation program, the assistant superintendent is not entitled to any district contribution towards health and welfare benefits. The assistant superintendent shall receive a term life insurance policy with a death benefit equal to $125,000. The district will pay the assistant superintendent's dues to participate in up to one professional, educational, or community service organization approved by the superintendent, and the assistant superintendent shall receive $200 per month as an automobile allowance for the performance of district services within the scope of the assistant superintendent's employment. This concludes the summary.
Is there any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve the employment agreement for the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Andrew Demeo.
So moved.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Gamoyen and a second by K. Spears Saleno.
Motion passes unanimously 7-0.
Okay. This item is the board's discussion and possible approval of an employment agreement with Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Development, Benjamin Dillon. The district's legal counsel, Megan Macy, will present this item.
Again, the law requires a summary. This will probably sound familiar. The key material terms of the employment agreement are the term is for four years from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2028. For the 2024-25 school year, the assistant superintendent shall be placed at step three of the assistant superintendent's salary schedule with an annual base salary of $245,970. Per the terms of his existing contract, this salary reflects a merit increase for a satisfactory evaluation. In addition to the assistant superintendent's base salary, the assistant superintendent shall be entitled to $400 per year if he possesses a master's degree or $650 per year if he possesses a doctoral degree. The assistant superintendent shall participate in the district's total compensation program on the same terms and conditions as all other district certificated managers. Since the assistant superintendent participates in the total comp program, the assistant superintendent shall not be entitled to any district contribution towards health and welfare benefits. The assistant superintendent shall receive a term life insurance policy with a death benefit equal to $125,000. District will pay the assistant superintendent's dues to participate up to, up to one professional, educational, or community service organization approved by the superintendent, and the assistant superintendent shall receive $200 per month as an automobile allowance. This concludes the summary.
Is there any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve the employment agreement for the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Development, Benjamin Dillon.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
I'll give it to Belt. All right. On a motion by Board Member K. Spears Saleno and a second by Board Member Belt.
Motion passes unanimously 7-0.
Employment Agreement Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Leadership. This item is the board's discussion and possible approval of an employment agreement with Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Leadership, Mark Thompson. The district's legal counsel, Megan Macy, will present this item.
Right. Key material terms for this employment agreement are as follows. The term is for four years from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2028. For the 2425 school year, the assistant superintendent shall be placed on step four of the assistant superintendent's salary schedule with an annual base salary of $261,987. Per the terms of his existing contract, this salary reflects a merit increase based on a satisfactory evaluation. In addition to the assistant superintendent's base salary, he shall be entitled to $400 per year if he possesses a master's degree or $650 per year if he possesses a doctoral degree. The assistant superintendent shall participate in the district's total compensation program on the same terms and conditions as all other district certificated managers. Since the assistant superintendent participates in the district's total comp program, the assistant superintendent shall not be entitled to any contribution towards health and welfare benefits. The assistant superintendent shall receive a term life insurance policy with a death benefit equal to $125,000. The district will pay the assistant superintendent's dues to participate in up to one professional, educational, or community service organization approved by the superintendent, and the assistant superintendent shall receive $200 per month as an automobile allowance for performance of district services.
Is there any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve the employment agreement for the Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Leadership, Mark Thompson?
So moved.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Gamoyen and a second by Board Member K. Spears Saleno.
Motion passes unanimously 7-0.
And last but definitely not least, this item is the board's discussion and possible approval of an employment agreement with Superintendent William Kirk Schrum. The district's legal counsel, Megan Macy, will present this item.
Okay. Last time you have to listen to me on this. So the Um, so the, the material terms are as follows. The term is for four years from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2028. For the 2425 school year, the superintendent shall be placed on step three of the superintendent's salary schedule with the superintendent's annual base salary of $346,186. Per the terms of his existing contract, this salary reflects a merit increase for the superintendent for a satisfactory evaluation. In addition to the superintendent's base salary, the superintendent shall be entitled to $400 per year if he possesses a master's degree or $650 per year if he possesses a doctoral degree. Superintendent shall participate in the district's total compensation program on the same terms and conditions as all other district certificated managers. Since the superintendent participates in the district's total comp program, the superintendent shall not be entitled to contribution towards health and welfare benefits. The superintendent shall receive a term life insurance policy with a death benefit equal to $125,000. The district will pay the superintendent's dues to participate in up to four professional educational or community service organizations approved by the board and the superintendent shall receive a $200 per month as an automobile allowance for the performance of district services within the scope of employment. This concludes the summary.
Is there any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve the employment agreement for the Superintendent William Kirk Schrum?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
On a motion by board member Case Beer Saleno and a second by board member Vegas.
Motion passes unanimously, seven oh.
Not quite gone yet. Resolution to establish salary for the superintendent, assistant superintendents, classified chiefs, district managers and confidential employees effective July 1st, 2024. District's legal counsel, Megan Macy.
Sure. And this resolution is the annual resolution that we bring to the board, um, approving all of the salary schedules. Because there was uh, no cost of living increase, salary schedules are consistent from year to year. So any questions on that?
Is there any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve and adopt the resolution to establish the salary for the superintendent, assistant superintendents, classified chiefs, district managers and confidential employees effective July 1st, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
On a board, on a motion by board member Case Beer Saleno and a second by board member Vegas.
Motion passes unanimously, seven oh.
Thank you. And declaration for, of need for fully qualified educators, Assistant Superintendent of HRD, Ben Dillon.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent Schrum, members of the board. Uh, the declaration of need for fully qualified educators is a form submitted every year to CTC. It's used to estimate the number of emergency permits and limited assignment teachers that'll be employed for the school year. So this is all of our permits except those otherwise that I often bring to you, like our PIPs, our, our STIPS and our waivers. So I requesting that the board approve uh, this item so that we can do so and carry that forward to the state for approval.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve the declaration of need for fully qualified educators?
I'll motion.
Second.
On a motion by board member Case Beer Saleno and a second by board member Gamoyen. Oh, oh, thank you.
Motion passes unanimously, seven oh.
Notice to intent to employ certificated management personnel and approval of administrative services credential waiver request, Assistant Superintendent of HRD, Benjamin Dillon.
Again, this is one of our regular items we bring specifically, this waiver is for an individual who is moving in an administrative position and requires a waiver to move forward with the required and necessary uh, credentialing programming involved.
Is there any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve the administrative services credential waiver request?
Motion.
I'll second.
On a motion by board member Neeler and a second by Case Beer Saleno.
Motion passes unanimously, seven oh.
Notice of intent to employ certificated personnel and approval of variable term waiver request for bilingual, cross-cultural language and academic development, Assistant Super of HRD, Benjamin Dillon.
Thank you very much. Uh, so that's a lot of words. Um, you might've heard to something as a B clad. That is what this is. So this is a variable term waiver request for B clad. Um, in relation to a specific individual who we are excited about being able to teach in our dual immersion program this coming year.
All right. Any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve the variable term waiver request for bilingual, cross-cultural language and academic development?
So moved.
I'll second.
On a motion by board member Gamoyen and a second by board member Case Beer Saleno.
Motion passes unanimously, seven oh.
All right. And one final item, notice of intent to employ certificated personnel and approval of variable term waiver request for CCSD certification, Assistant Superintendent of HRD, Ben Dillon.
So CCSD is a certificate of completion of staff development. It, it essentially what this does is it authorizes this specific teacher to teach uh, specially designed academic instruction delivered in English to English learners. Um, so requesting that the board approve uh, this waiver request for this individual as we go into the upcoming school year.
All right. Any public comment? Any board member comments? May I have a motion to approve the variable term waiver request for CCSD certification?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
On a motion by board member Vegas and a second by board member Case Beer Saleno.
Motion passes unanimously, seven oh.
This meeting is now adjourned.